I'd like to bring this meeting to order. If you guys could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Michelle McHugh.
Here.
Dan Cochiola.
Here.
Candemir.
Here.
Robert DeSina.
Here.
Karina Noid.
Here.
Robert Ritallick.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public participation. For anyone that's new, there's a form to be filled out and handed in if you would like to speak, and the limit is for three minutes. First, we have Dan DeVito.
Dan DeVito, Pine Ridge Drive Extension, Oakville. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all who won their elections. Just have a few things. Thank you for your service to our town. I recognize the work each of you puts in, often without acknowledgement, and sometimes under the challenges that come with social media and public scrutiny. I also understand the time this commitment takes away from your personal lives and family. Please know that your efforts are truly appreciated. I'm looking forward to the next few years. We have several significant projects ahead of us in town, and I'm confident that the council, working collaboratively with the town, will continue making meaningful improvements to Watertown. Third thing, thank you to everyone involved in the bond effort. The rate came in nearly 1.5% lower than anticipated, saving residents approximately 600,000 in the first year alone. That's an outstanding result. Fourth, regarding residents' concerns about accountability, while many understandably wanted immediate action, I believe it was wise to prioritize securing the bond, preventing further unnecessary interest payments to Waterbury. It also made sense to wait until the new town council was seated, so the same individuals can follow the process through to completion. I look forward to the commission's work, both to understand what occurred and to establish safeguards, ensuring that something like this can never happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Al Michael.
I've been accused of not talking loud enough, so I'll try to get this closer to my mouth. The first thing I always love to talk about is public participation. I just want to comment that it's not participation, it's only comments. I get no answers when I ask questions to the town council. So change it back to comment. I'm going to make more comments. This question is probably for the town manager when he gets his chance to talk, but I'm wondering if all this bond information that we're seeing is going to still keep us under that arbitrary bond limit that we've had for years. This is for the finance director. She produced the first quarterly report for this year and gave it to the town council. In order for me to get it, I have to FOI it, which will save a lot of time if that quarterly report was just put on the webpage under the title of Budgets. Of course, I read the high school description of the aquatics program, and from what I understand, that's going to be a very difficult job. The person that did it before, I did an outstanding job, so it'll be a tough job to fill his shoes, or his flippers, whatever. One thing, though, the job description didn't require the ability to swim. Only the agreement to become a lifeguard, so I'm sure he'll be able to swim one of these days. There's also a lot of information on the suspense list, but I don't see it listed under new business. I'm not sure. There was an awful lot of stuff in suspense lists, which I thought was interesting. Okay, and the discussion on the commission that we're talking about, trying to find out what caused the problem? I think the problem was caused by somebody made a mistake. I don't know how they made the mistake, but I would be more interested in preventing this to happen in the future by looking at new ways to audit what goes on in the finance department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nystress.
Denise Russ, 135 Porter Street, Watertown. I'd like to congratulate all the new council members that won, and I do hope the nine of you do work to keep everybody in the loop of what's going on, and no one finds out at the last minute when there's a council meeting. I'm asking once again that the town council goes out to bid for a new town attorney. We've had a lot of problems in the past years with the water and sewer issue and a few other problems, and I just think it's time that we get some new blood as a town attorney that isn't, get someone new with a clean slate, so we can look at it with a whole different view. Because why know, when someone's in a position a very long time, you get comfortable, you get slack, and it's just, I think, it's for a change. And I would also, if possible, instead of the full nine council being in the budget committee, I remember years ago when I was on this back in the 90s, we had a subcommittee for the budget committee. Four council people or three, they met separately, they went line item for line item with the budget, and the public was invited to come, so they knew what was going on. I would just like to see that come back, and then whoever is the chair, they report what that subcommittee did. I just think it's better, and everybody gets a better understanding, and when it comes time for the town council's recommendations for the final budget, I hope the nine members make the decision, because I know previously, when I was passed on this, we never got asked about any council recommendations to be changed or deleted. I just hope you remember the minority when it comes to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tad Johnson.
Hi, Tad Johnson, 100 Cannon Ridge Drive. First of all, I want to congratulate the new members of the council. And then, second of all, I just want to say that I would support appointing an independent commission to investigate the $34 million water and sewer debacle, just to find out how the system failed and how it can be bettered in future decisions.
Thank you. Catherine Clare.
Hi. At the October 20th meeting, your packet included an internal memorandum of manager Ramo, dated October 8th, regarding a statement I made at the October 6th meeting. The memo was regarding an alleged violation of absentee ballot laws. Mr. Ramo made some calls to the state and learned that the town did not have to self-report the incident I spoke of. Well, so what? The appropriate question to ask the state would have been, what happens when a citizen makes a complaint? So I'm going to let you know. I received notification from the State Elections Enforcement Commission, dated November 5th, advising that the agency voted to authorize an investigation into my complaint regarding our town clerk's office. If Mr. Ramo's memo was meant to lead the council to believe that what I said at the October 6th meeting was nonsense, well, I guess you were ill-advised. Now I would like to know where the rate payers $3,403,748.88 is. The town voted to bond $34 million for settlement and litigation, I'm sorry, settlement of the litigation and related costs. We recently made the final settlement payment to Waterbury in the amount of $30,596,251.12. So why doesn't Mr. Ramo's November 2025 memo provide an accounting of what cost will eat the rest of the ban amount? That money can only be used for settlement and related costs, and rate payers deserve that information. Will this money be used to cover the interest? Since there was no mention in the memo, kindly be sure we receive an answer tonight, because we deserve it. It also wouldn't hurt to get an explanation of page four, number five, of that memo that says supplemental payments included $132,000 approximately and a $205,000 sewer account. Were those two payments included the amount paid toward the judgment, or were they separate? It's really confusing, because there's no check numbers listed for those two payments. It seems like they were paid out of the ban money. It's hard to understand. And really, I think everyone here could say that the rate payers are really tired of the lack of transparency with this fiasco. Thank you.
And last is Frankie Poplowski.
I have a couple of questions. When I read through the papers for tonight's meeting, I see the Public Works is asking for $82,500 for another road survey, when they already had one three years ago. Do we have different roads in town? I mean, what's happened that we need to spend another $82,500? I've been trying to put a blight complaint in, and the website is not working correctly. If somebody could check that out for me, I would appreciate it. Same complaints that we get up there all the time, that people from Riverside keep putting their mattresses and box springs up at the top of Chestnut Avenue and Highland Avenue. Frankly, I'm getting sick and tired of looking at it, so... The one thing I did notice in the paperwork for tonight is town's taking care of all of its employees, but you're not taking care of the townspeople. And there's raises in there, there's all kinds of stuff. It just seems like you're spending money like a drunken sailor. And with all this stuff that's happened with this water and sewer thing, and you can't even tell us what we're going to be paying for a bond yet, no meetings for the rest of the year. What is going on? It's you don't want us to know what's going on, and you can't even tell us what our bills are going to be, and now you're talking about rate increases throughout the next three years from water and sewer. When do we get to find out what is going on? You want us to pay these bills, then you better start telling us the truth, or all of us will just stop paying the bills.
Thank you. And that was it for public participation. Moving on to approval of our minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the October 20th, 2025 regular meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, stuntsions?
I wasn't here.
On assumption. Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the November 10th, 2025 special meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, stuntsions, motion passes. I don't have a chairman's report tonight, but we did receive correspondence from Jamie Young regarding a request for a memorial sign for, I believe, their dad, dated October 9th, 2025. Staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, just to re-advice that the Watertown Oakville Chamber awarded the Town of Watertown a beautification award for our new Park Atlanta Main Street in Watertown. We also had a effort from Watertown Lions Club headed by Kathy Woolco. She put luminaries all along our green in different colors and took videos, and it went pretty much all over social media. It was actually very beautiful. I would like to recommend that we bring her in next meeting to honor her for that effort. It was for Veterans Day, and the video was kind of cool. We could probably show it on our TVs for next meeting. I also received a memo from the senior center, or I'm sorry, the Commission on Aging, regarding the usage of our buses. They're questioning whether our buses are able to, if we're able to staff those buses, and we have not been able to staff the buses. The recommendation from the commission was for us to go after a part-time employee. This is a personnel issue that the town is monitoring very closely. At this point, we do not have the money and the budget to go after a part-time employee, but this should be coming to a head very shortly. In the meantime, over the last week and a half, we did hire a per diem person, so this shall relieve some of the issue with busing. So we're in full agreement with the memo that was sent by the commission, but our hands were tied with the personnel issue, and I hope that this will be a non-issue within the next month or so. In discussion of the memo that I sent to the council, it was sent ahead of time for you to read. I'm happy to answer any questions, go through any information to clarify if you have some desire.
Yeah. So it looks like, under staffing and service capacity, a few departments are understaffed. So how are those shortages affecting response times, accuracy? I guess really the question is, is that something that needs to be mitigated, or is that something that we're just going to ride out? Are we talking about the bond, or are we talking?
I think you're to the last comment I just made regarding our busing.
Well, staffing and service capacity, I'm looking at under the town manager's report.
Can you show me the document you're referring to? I don't.
Yes.
Or maybe the date it was issued?
I'm going to withdraw that comment for now. Thank you. Any questions or discussion related to the memo that you put together related to the bond this time?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. Firstly, we've banned $34 million for the water and sewer, correct? And the total payment to Waterbury was significantly less than that. For the time being, are those extra funds in the general fund, or?
They are currently located in our special fund with the intent to move it into a high-yield interest-bearing account. So the cost to our borrowing is going to be at the 2.55, I believe, and we're expecting there are an interest on that, $3 to $4 million at 4%. Whatever interest is earned, we hope that will mitigate the cost to the rate payers as we move through that. So as we continue to give you updates on the money, we'll give you a complete accounting so that the council can follow.
I have a follow-up question. When the bond attorney was discussing the road bonding, the 10 million, if I recall correctly, he had recommended 4 million initially, so that we could utilize those funds, and then borrowing 6 million down the line. And his reasoning was IRS regulations earning interest above what we've bonded at. Is that going to be an issue for those?
So no, won't. So just to clarify, we projected to borrow $10 million. We actually borrowed $6 million. We left $4 million on the table for another band or bond in the future. We anticipate that to be in 2028. So as we discussed this with our bonding attorney, we were under the understanding, because we're initially expensing $30 million out of that $34 million request for the water and sewer, allowing $4 million to sit in an interest-bearing account would not be an IRS issue. If we were to borrow that additional 4 million, it would have looked like we were trying to actually earn money on what we borrowed, and he advised us not to do that. But we were very safe, and we were in agreement that would be the best interest for us to move with that $34 million with WSA borrowing.
At any point in the near future, would we be able to invite the bond attorney in again for follow-up questions, since we've now gone with the bands?
Yeah, it's up to the council to give me that directive.
Get back, Carolyn.
No, thank you.
Related to the extra money on the water and sewer bond, right now it's earning interest. A year from now, when either we re-band or we go out and get the long-term bonds, is the intention to keep that in the bond, or would that bond possibly be a couple million dollars less when we go for the long-term bonds? Has there been much discussion on that?
I think this would be up to the council and WSA to actually direct me to do that, but I think it would be prudent for us to take that $4 million and apply it and reduce the actual amount of the bond in 2026. So we would take that $4 million, apply it to the payment of the band, and that would subsequently reduce it.
Instead of 34, it might be 30 or something close.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussions on that?
Could I follow up with the question that you just asked? So I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. Are you saying the $4 million you would then apply to the $34 million bond, even though that was supposed to be used for roads?
No, no, no.
No, I've understood. This is all water and sewer that you're talking about.
That extra 3 million, whatever it is, instead of getting $34 million long-term bonds, we only do 31 million.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify regarding the comment that was made during public participation, that the meetings for WSA have been canceled. I haven't seen a cancellation for the December meeting, but they did not have a meeting scheduled for November. I have prepared a memo to send to the WSA and the superintendent on your behalf directing them to have a meeting as soon as possible, so they can evaluate what was prepared in this document. I actually created a memo that pulled out the details that they need to move forward with, so that we can get a special hearing to actually get the band increase that would result in the payment of the band up and running properly. I don't want to wait until the last minute, because then, you know, this may potentially have to happen in the last three months before the band is due, so we want to get this up and running as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mark. Maria?
Yes, all set.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman, council members. Just a finance update for you. We are continuing our work on the audit for fiscal year 2425. The auditors are scheduled to be on site this week. Our goal remains to have the audit completed by December 31st, and staff are actively preparing documents and reconciling key accounts to ensure a smooth and timely audit as it relates to our 2627 budget. The budget for fiscal year 2627 has been successfully exported from Tyler and uploaded to a newly created shared drive. This drive was created by Sean Thiel in our IT department. This was to communicate and streamline document sharing amongst the town manager, designated staff in the finance department, and specific department heads. And finally, our year-end payroll processing. As the calendar year draws to a close on December 31st, we're actively working with Tyler and our payroll coordinator to make sure that our payroll processes are timely and accurately filed by December 31st.
Thank you. Do we have any subcommittee reports? Moving on to new business.
I move to approve the proposed agreement between the Town of Watertown and Town Hall Supervisors' Employees, CSEA SEIU Local 2001, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, stuntsions, motion passes.
I move to approve the job description for Recreation and Aquatics Program Coordinator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, stuntsions, motion passes.
I move to authorize a bid waiver for services to be provided by Beta Group Incorporated to provide additional and updated road asset management services for the Town of Watertown to include data collection on guide rails, signage, pavement markings, and road surface condition scores for an amount not to exceed $82,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or?
Question for Mr. Poplowski.
Jerry, I'm just wondering how frequently we do these assessments and how frequently it's recommended.
It's recommended to do every three years, especially with the amount of road miles that we did over the past three years to get a current snapshot of our conditions of our road network.
So we're on target.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Jerry, I'm wondering if you know off the top of your head what it was we paid for the service three years ago?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I know I did ask for additional things, which was 360 view, like Google Street View, so I could have it along 141 miles of road. Currently, right now, it's only about 50% of our roads on Google Street View. I also asked for pavement markings, guide rails, and road signage, so I could have a good inventory of our assets to put our funding towards for repairs.
Okay, so it's definitely increased, because I.
Yes, because we asked for additional things to support all of our assets in the right of way.
The previous work was just for the roads. This includes the signs and everything else. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, stuntsions, motion passes?
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $731.40 from the general fund to police overtime. Funds were received from the state of Connecticut for homeland security activities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stuntsions, motion passes.
I move to approve the resolution approving town council meeting dates and times for 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing transfers for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 to close out the fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing transfers for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the payment of tax refunds.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the suspense list as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Moving on to old business.
I'd like to add to the agenda under old business. I make a motion to add to the agenda discussion and possible action relative to establishing a committee to review and make recommendations relative to the water and sewer lawsuit.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on adding this to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I had a question. I just wanted to relate after. I was a little confused because this was Rachel's tabled motion. Is that correct?
We'll get to that. Yep. All in favor, please say aye again.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? At a previous meeting, I believe it was dated October 6th, there was a motion by Rachel Ryan that was where did I make a motion for discussion and possible action on creating a commission to investigate what led to the water and sewer lawsuit? What it happened, sorry, why it happened and to come up with recommendations for preventing similar situations in the future. Is there any additional discussion on that motion?
I have a more specific motion.
Would you like to amend that motion?
Yes.
You would have to amend it.
What do you like to amend it to?
Okay, so I'd like to amend the emotion. Excuse me, amend the motion and should I just read the new? Okay. To establish a seven-person commission whose charge will be to investigate what led to the decisions that made, sorry, that would lead to the decision that the water and sewer lawsuit with Waterbury and to provide recommendations for changes that the town council can make so that the town attorney, the town manager, the WSA, and the town council are all informed and involved in any further decisions of this magnitude. Two members of the commission should be current members of the town council and the other five should be citizens of Watertown, but they cannot currently be serving on any boards or commissions, be employed by the Town of Watertown, or be on any party's town committees. All members must be approved by unanimous consent of the town council.
Is there a second to amend the current motion?
I second.
Is there any discussion on this amendment?
How would the, how would the members be chosen?
In the past, Jonathan can probably speak to this. I mean, it's been, the town council has reached out and asked people from the town to do that.
Do we want to amend the motion so it's on there and then we can further discuss that motion?
Yeah.
So all in favor of amending the motion that was on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Abstentions?
You really haven't amended the motion. You've substituted it. But okay, all right.
Motion passes. Can you just reread your motion again?
I move to establish a seven-person commission whose charge will be to investigate what led to the decisions that led to the water and sewer lawsuit with Waterbury and to provide recommendations for changes that the town council can make so that the town attorney, the town manager, the WSA, and the town council are all informed and involved in any further decisions of this magnitude. Two members of the commission should be current members of the town council and the other five should be citizens of Watertown, but they cannot currently be serving on any boards or commissions, be employed by the Town of Watertown, or be on any party's town committee. All members must be approved by unanimous consent of the town council.
So is there any discussion on this motion? Marian?
I think the intent of the motion is a good one. We had even, as chairman, previous chairman, I had even thought of something on the, along the same lines to be handled after elections. So my, my thought is not so much against the concept. It's more in the way the motion reads. Number one, it can't be a commission because the council has to appoint a committee, not commissions.
That's, that's not what the charter says. The charter, I read the charter, that the town council has the power to create commissions.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to debate that. I think it, it doesn't list who the members are and it doesn't give a timeframe for the action to be done. And I, I believe seven members is, is too long. So I'm going to vote against the motion.
Any further discussion?
If I may, I also have to agree with Marian. I think that seven members is going to be way too much. And then to get all of us together to agree on these seven members unanimously, you know, that's not going to happen. And we need to make sure that we get this information out to people and we want it to happen quick and precise. So I think that the amount of people on here will never allow that to happen. Just my two cents into it.
I've been on other commissions where there have been that many people, including on the ARPA funds that very successfully came up with the idea for the parking lot, which just won the award from the Chamber of Commerce. And I think it's really unfortunate to say that we can't all agree on outstanding members of our community to serve on this commission. The whole point is to find people who are not partisan and are willing to do what's in the best interest of the town. And if we can't all agree on those people, that's, that's a problem.
Well, my point was that we, it's going to be difficult to find those people and to get people to volunteer to do this and then set committee times and make these committees happen. We're going to be a year down the road and we're still going to be talking about this. And I don't think it's, it's the right timeframe.
There's, look in the audience. There's people who are here who are really interested in this.
Mr. Chairman.
Bet there's people who would be willing to serve in this room. I mean, the population of Watertown is over 20,000 people. I think we can find five people.
Mr. Chairman, what, what I think I hear, though, is not disagreement in the in the concept. Right? So if there's agreement in the concept, and I also don't think I heard disagreement in the idea that the people on the committee should be people that we all agree on, right? Like there's, I didn't hear disagreement on that either. So there, in my mind, might be some middle ground where we could find how to create the commission. What I wonder is in Rachel's proposal, she identifies that there should be two council members as part of that committee. Do we want to do this in a two-step process? And step one being identifying the council members who would take the lead on this and then come back to this council at our next regular meeting and identify who the potential public candidates are that then can be chosen. In that way, we create a quick scenario. If you say, Rob, that it has to be five instead of seven, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I don't think seven slows it down, but we're talking about the same thing. So there's a way to move forward based on the discussion I'm hearing.
Mary. I agree with you. I think that there, we absolutely need to get information out to the town because, I mean, you can hear it. It's, it's very loud and very vocal and you've all made your point. I'm thinking, you know, does it really matter if it's three, five, seven, 10? As long as the people that are on the committee commit to making sure there's transparency and that the, the actual information in, in an easy-to-read way actually get out to the town, get on the website, et cetera. But I, I agree, the idea, it's, it's overdue.
Any other?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I agree that middle ground can be found. I think it's a good concept and I think amongst us, we can move forward with something that's agreeable. I also want to voice that it's extremely important that the committee is not made up of entirely council members. The public has voiced their opinion that they do not trust this council after this water and sewer issue. So I think community engagement is, is vital.
We could put out a, I'm sorry. We could put out a request for interest to see if there's any community members who would want to be engaged and to see if there's candidates that we can then as a council that, especially the two council members who would head up that commission could bring candidates to the whole council.
I think it's going to take too long. You're going to get 100 people who want to be involved. My two cents.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and we want this to, I mean, we, we want to get the information out there. I mean, there's a lot of documentation around what went wrong. And I think part of our, of the charge is to make the safeguards in place to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is defeated.
Through the chair, are you going to propose an alternative plan?
That's what we add to the agenda.
I move to establish a bipartisan committee to review the history of the water and sewer lawsuit with Waterbury with the following objectives. One, to recommend safeguards that will help prevent similar situations from arising in the future. Two, to recommend policies and/or procedures to ensure the public remain informed. Three, to examine the business relationship between the town council and the Water and Sewer Authority and recommend any appropriate changes. The committee shall consist of Republican Town Council Member Michelle McHugh, who will serve as chair, Democratic Town Council Member Daniel Cochiola, and Watertown Police Department Chaplain Pastor Joseph Chabot. The committee will report its recommendations to the town council no later than February 2nd, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion and comments?
First of all, if you read the charter, the town manager is in charge of the Water and Sewer Authority. And if you want to change that, you need to have either an ordinance or a charter revision commission. So that's one problem with this commission.
Keep in mind, it's the, it's finding the recommendations.
Right, but I'm saying it would have to then go through an ordinance or a charter revision, most likely a charter revision.
Yep. That, that is probably accurate. Any other questions or comments?
I just find this just absolutely appalling, the lack of respect. Did you guys read the, did you read the voting? You guys lost the election. You lost it. You only are in power because the, the independents and the Democrats split your vote, but more people voted against you than for you. And what people want is my motion, not you guys going behind your back and doing what you always do and come up with these plans. The Board of Education chose a bipartisan chair and vice chair, and you couldn't even do that here. You selected somebody who's never served on this town committee ever over me, who has as much experience as two other members of this committee. I'm appalled. Absolutely appalled. And I've been on this town council for six years. The lack of respect that you have for us and the minority is ridiculous and you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Order, please.
I, through the chair, I have to say that that's why you're the minority. And the people voted, the people voted, the people voted. And I wouldn't vote for you as the chair because you don't pay taxes in this town.
Why is bullshit? I pay taxes.
Okay, on your part, on your part.
Don't reveal my personal finances are. This doesn't pay taxes.
Yep, that's right. I do because I'm very proud of my president. That's why.
Rob?
Yes, Dan? Turn your mic back on, please.
Oh, is my mic down?
Not yet. There we go. Back to the issue at hand. I do have concerns with this proposal in that there are no community members to be part of the committee. And I think the community, there, there is one, one, but chosen. And I, I do think there would be a lot of value to opening it up to the people who want to have a voice. I, speaking for people who want to have a voice, there's a lot of value to opening that door and it may delay. But the goodwill it would generate and it won't ruin the product. So I would
Keep in mind, as far as the participation from the public as a whole, there's nothing stopping the committee from having a meeting and having received comments from the public. It's just that final recommendations to the town council would be made up of the committee. But there's nothing stopping them from getting input from everyone in town. And I think one of the reasons why Michelle and Dan were selected is that they're the two town council members that had the least involvement, AKA no one.
No.
Buy it, please.
Oh. Needs to be a change, so.
And that's why you guys were chosen is that you had no activity involved in the lawsuit. So there, you guys are as impartial as anyone else sitting up here.
Yes, and, 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 and I respect that and I get it. And I, I honor that thought process. I, I do think we feel the energy in the room and my suggestion of, of allowing that, and I'll leave it, but that will go a long way toward mitigating some of this that we feel.
Are there any concerns, questions about the actual charges of the committee that was proposed? Anything specific?
I think Dan and Michelle, great idea. I don't know who that third person is or how they were, how they came about.
I, I can answer that.
I made a recommendation that we ask a clergy so that their opinion would be unquestioned. That they would be someone that everyone in the community respected along with the two new members that had no previous action. So it seemed like it, it needed to be either the priest from St. John's or some other clergy person. And the priest from St. John's is leaving town, so that wasn't an option. So then the thought of the chaplain came up.
I can, I can appreciate your thought process because I know you're, you're a very faithful man. I can, I can appreciate your thought process because I know you're, you're a very faithful woman, and I appreciate that.
You, you want to do what's right for the town, you care as much as everybody else does, I'm, I'm a ratepayer too, so I care just as much as everybody else does, and I want all the answers and I want my neighbor that I live next door to and talk to to have all the answers. And I think the motion that's in front of us now is the same, answers the exact same questions as Rachel made. It asks why it happened, how it happened, how we're going to prevent it from happening, and it goes farther, it's looking into the authorities that allowed it to happen. Um, it's just different language. It doesn't have as many people, it doesn't have the citizens, and I understand that you want to involve people from town, but it's really hard to find anybody right now that isn't mad about the issue. Anybody that can be unprejudiced about the facts that they're going to see and, and give us an honest answer. And, and I think there's just too much anger, we were trying to find people that could be objective and not not upset and mad or here and yelled at us, or were on social media, or had already voiced an opinion about what should be done in the future. Somebody that was totally objective, that hadn't looked at it before or spoken about it before. Um, that's where I was coming from and, and wanting to handle it this way. Just coming to the same conclusions, but maybe just a different road to get there.
Mary Ann, thank you so much for responding. Um, I mean this with the greatest respect. Um, and I, I am certainly not saying anything about this gentleman, I don't know him. Um, but for me personally, and this may be for other folks, but, um, the dignity of being a clergy member does not automatically, um, ensue trust for me, and it may not for others. Um, I think there are a lot of angry people, rightfully so. That doesn't necessarily mean that we cannot find folks who can work well together to get to the bottom of, of the issue. And I really do think that, um, forming the committee this way, or the commission, um, is not what's going to restore the trust and accountability that the townspeople very strongly are, are, are asking for.
And just to be clear, I mean, the main issue is not the motion as far as what the committee's going to do, it's just the makeup of the committee.
That is my concern.
Rachel, you also agree with that, or? Or, or you have more issues?
Yes, no, I, I would agree with everything that Karina just said, um. I think that there are a significant number of people in town who don't use water and sewer, who could be objective. Um, every day attorneys find objective jurors to serve on juries, so I just think that that argument that you can't find five people or objective people is just false. Um, and I think it would be really hard for people in the town who practice different faiths to feel like somebody was picked because they are of a particular faith to serve on this commission. Um, and I agree with what Karina said, I mean, there's certainly value in that, but I don't, don't think it's appropriate for a governmental body to pick somebody because they are particularly religious leader, I think there should be a separation of church and state in that.
I think it was more of someone that was, um, could be trusted, I guess is.
But you're basing that trust on their religious faith, and that's just seems to be a violation of the First Amendment.
And their, and their support of the town as, as your involvement with the ARPA. At least part.
Yes, Herm, turn your mic back on.
When I heard before.
You must turn.
I'm sorry, when I heard before the name of the. Okay, right. I won't even use it, you'll probably be able to hear me. When I heard before the name of the person that was suggested as sitting on the committee with Michelle and Dan, I said to myself, what a great choice. The man is not denominational. He is a counselor, he's an advisor, and if anybody here on the council Googles his name, he's done papers that have been published in the past years, few years I didn't even know about. And when he was, in my previous life where I previously worked, he was the police chaplain. And I've worked with him on death notifications, counseling officers at times of grief. Uh, he'd be one to sit on the board and he wouldn't be one to pass judgment. I think he's a good choice, and he is non-denominational and he deals more in counseling. And he said that he would do it provided it was on a voluntary basis, of course, and if one interfered with counseling is he's the clergy of a church that's non-denominational. Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to reply to Rachel's comments. I was the managing director for Quest Diagnostics in New England. In that position, which was the top leadership position in New England for Quest, I was responsible for sales, finance, medical staff, technical staff, IT, logistics, sales, you name it. I had over seven hundred employees, I had a P and L responsibility of two hundred and fifty million dollars, had three laboratories, over two hundred patient service centers. When I retired from Quest, I had a reception, they threw a reception for me with over three hundred people. Comments were, "The place will never be the same without you." "I went back to school because of what you said." And I'll, I, I don't get this one, but I'll still remember you when I'm eighty. To recap, I had the highest number of votes in this election. I think the townspeople have spoken. I am committed to working with the aid of you, and I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, or Independent, to make our town the best. You asked me if I'm qualified for vice chair. On my background and my commitment to this town, yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I might I may make a suggestion, um, with the motion that we have that includes, um, Dan, Michelle, and the chaplain, if we have the three of them decide on two additional members, is that something that?
From the public?
From the public, yes. That the three of them would decide who those two additional people would be.
Jonathan, I, I, I would welcome that.
We have, we have. We have to make it, uh, as an amendment.
We're discussing it at the moment. Any comments on that suggestion?
From the three.
Shut the motion before you add this.
From the three names.
Second, Herm.
I'd be more comfortable with Dan and Michelle agreeing together on members of the public because the third person is someone, some of the members of this council know.
I would like to do it.
But not all of us.
Unanimous, all three of them agree.
Unanimous. That sounds fair. Each one of us have a veto.
Great.
That sounds great because it would be the three of you plus whoever the two might be, it would have to be with the concurrence of the three of you.
Right.
That sounds a very good amendment.
Would someone like to make that amendment?
I'll make the amendment to the motion that the committee be expanded by two members from the public to be chosen and approved unanimously by the two council members.
The three members of the.
Three members of the council.
I second.
Any further discussion on that?
Um, I'll, I just have to say that I will be voting against that because that's two people that I'm in favor of and one person who I have no idea. I would like to think that he's impartial, but I don't know that.
Yeah, even though all three of them would need to.
Yes, so that could be two to one, either five.
No, no.
No, 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 no.
I would have veto power.
I am. Oh, it has to be unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Slightly important.
Yeah.
Any other discussions? Comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions?
Now we have to hold on to the motion.
Yep. So that is adding, that's amending the motion. Um, any further discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion passes? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.